...up front gentlemen. If you want to come to the front. Call me in order? If you want me to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on to public input. I got one. Please come forward.
Counselor. I think I have to say former in group. Ladies and gentlemen. My name is Margaret Presley and I'm here to both express strong support for the council passing the resolution that speaks against the recent acts of racism that happened on Bethany campus and to offer two suggestions as to how the community can be proactive in approaching this issue and making our community more welcoming and to an inclusive of racial and cultural diversity. I've lived in Lindesburg since 1989, living in the Kansas City area to teach social work at Bethany College. Because of both personal experience and my profession, one of the things I missed when we moved here was diversity. Lindesburg is almost slightly more diverse than it was in 1989. I served as the minority speaking counselor at Bethany College for a short time. During that time, I heard of many discriminatory acts the students experienced on campus in Lindesburg and in Selina and McPherson. Because I'm no longer at the college, I cannot speak to what the current college students are experiencing, but have heard of younger students experiencing a lot of name calling in our public schools. Therefore, I feel strongly that while a resolution is important, we must go beyond that as a community. One idea I have for doing that is a model I have discovered called the welcome table. This model comes out of the William Winter Institute for Racial Preconciliation at the University of Mississippi. It trains seniors to facilitate difficult discussions on race. I cannot take the time to go into the model here, but have the more information may be found at, I have the website, I'll do the net to my notes to Jerry, and I have some more copies if anybody wants some. The second idea I have is for using the arts to help address the racial issue that is confronting us here in Lindesburg. It would be wonderful if we could get visual artists in our community together and talk to them about doing some racially inclusive art. We could then have a concert slash art slash dance slash theater show with the concert show, with a concert showcasing things like gospel jazz, ragtime, Latin, et cetera, music and performance. An art show could be held along with the concert. The art could then be put on public display at various places within our community, at the college, merchants, Sunstream Center, City Hall, et cetera, to give a more inclusive feeling to our town. I don't know how much it would cost. I'm sorry, I edited this too many times. And I miss the voice on my stomach. It doesn't actually cost a pay the artist for the time or product. This is a project that could involve many groups in town. Lindesburg Arts Council might be able to take in some money and be the primary coordinator. Maybe the college and or capital could kick in, maybe from the city or the abhok group. I think the second project could be initiated immediately and have some long lasting effects. Perhaps it could add a multicultural aspect to festivals and other activities already held here. The organizers would have to address that matter. I am willing to help work on both of these ideas, but cannot undertake them alone. It has to be a community and college effort. Please let me know of your interest. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Presley. Can you be out giving your?
I can't. But I have, we have a couple of symposiums.
Are there others who wish to rise and speak tonight? Seeing done, let's move on to item four, amendments to the agenda. Council members, any amendments to the agenda?
There is one for executive sessions.
It's listed here, so. Mayor's report. First off, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. This is a very important meeting and it's really appreciated by myself and council members that you have taken up your time to be here, to listen and, I guess, respond in your own ways, whatever actions you could bring forward to offset some of the racist things and things that have happened to Bethany and potentially have been for our community. So again, I appreciate you all being here tonight. Another item, David Riseweek is retiring from our city service after 36 years. On Friday, October 7th, there'll be City Hall, there's an open house for him from 3:00 to 5:00. So council members and others, please put that on your agenda.
Will you repeat the name?
It's Friday, October 7th, from 3:00 to 5:00 here at City Hall in East Chambers. Again, 36 years of service in the city. Even summer, the winter, and the drugs doing what Dave does. So we appreciate your years of service, David. September meetings, remember the West Star Meeting, open house on the plant from 5:00 to 7:00. This is a discussion of the upcoming addition of another source of energy for us from the west and the power lines that'll bring them to the substation in the southeast part of our community. So a discussion about that and an input from the public and from others. Jerry, did you raise your hand for?
No, I just.
I'm scamming the room and I thought that, so thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda, what is your desire?
Move it through.
Second. That move to second for the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Roll call. Jerry?
Kelly?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Emo?
Mark?
Yes.
Thank you, under the rule of all motion carries. Item seven is the appointment of the recreation board. If you wish to rise and talk about that.
Um, we recommend you can even chill during the recreation board. She was actually my intern this past summer. Um, and she's also a varsity basketball player over at Bethany, so she'll be a good asset for working in kind of mindset of the culture. And she can be here tonight because she's at Bethany.
This is Kim. Looking at this, is giving a resident of Lindesburg or this address here to be out of the city?
Yeah, she, they're right outside Seattle, so I don't think that might have been reported for her.
Uh, there is a residency requirement serving on the recreation board. She's also participated in programs here with the city office.
What is your desire?
Move it through.
Second.
That move is seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Thank you. Blaney and Zoni? No report. No report here, you go. Uh, noble business. Move under item 10, new business, item eight is resolution 1416 and support the diversity and inclusiveness in our Lindesburg community. At this time, I get a call upon the city clerk, Jerry, to read the resolution for us.
Resolution number 14 dash 16, a resolution supporting and promoting diversity and inclusiveness within the city of Lindesburg. Whereas Lindesburg is a community of caring people who have created a healthy, safe, and secure place for people of all geographic, ethnic, economic, religious, and lifestyle backgrounds to live, learn, work, raise their children, and age with dignity. And whereas Lindesburg fundamentally, tolerance is a personal decision that comes from an attitude that is learnable and embraceful and believes that every person on earth is a treasure, vital to the health and prosperity of all. And whereas, one of the core values of the city of Lindesburg is to treat all persons with respect and dignity. And whereas, Lindesburg is a community promoting tolerance and inclusion while focusing on how we interact with our families, our neighbors, our visitors, our guests, and our coworkers by respecting them and ourselves. And whereas, the city of Lindesburg values all of its citizens and recognizes that many ethnicities have contributed to the strength of character of the citizens of Lindesburg. And whereas, the city of Lindesburg recognizes the strength in diversity and inclusiveness of its citizenry. And whereas, we, the people of Lindesburg, in keeping with the principle of equal civil rights for all, unequivocally oppose any manifestation of hatred and prejudice towards any group or individual in our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Lindesburg and its representatives shall not condone or tolerate any form of discrimination on the basis of race, color, religious creed, age, familial status, national origin, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity or expression, physical or mental disability, or veteran status. And therefore, it be further resolved that we stand together with all people of good faith in our community and acknowledge we have the power to change our attitude, to overcome our ignorance and fears, and to influence our children, our peers, and our neighborhoods, and that we manifest these values with action. Adopted and passed by the governing body of the city of Lindesburg, Kansas, this 19th day of September 2016.
Having heard the reading of the resolution, what is your desire?
I move that we approve this resolution.
Desire. Move to seconded, discussion please.
Councilwoman Betty Nelson could be here tonight, but she wanted to make everyone aware that she had this resolution has her full support as well.
Thank you. I think by the pass of the resolution, if, to stand quiet as a community is to also allow the actions of others, a small group within our community, to take over and to bring in an ideology that is not acceptable in this community or, as a matter of fact, in our nation. So to move forward with a resolution such as this from this council, I think is very important at this time. To support President Jones and Bethany College is also very important for us to do at this time. I know that there are other groups in the community working in different ways, capital, different ministers, different churches, different organizations, looking at ways that we as a community can stand up and say no to this form of hate and that. So I appreciate this council's approving of the resolution when it comes time to vote.
Just like I had, thank you mayor and Greg for your work on the resolution. Very well written and addresses things. I couldn't think of better way to put it on paper, thank you very much. While that's on paper, I think it's important we also continue to ask the individuals of our community. I think we've talked about group things we can do, I think that's great. But I think where we'll be the most effective is in our day-to-day activities and our day-to-day relationships with each other. And I think if they think good can come out of this, it'd be a reminder to all of us that it's no longer to, if they hear a, an off-color joke or a term to use, it's not okay to think, I can't believe you just said that. It's now time to say that, I can't believe you just said that. And I'm as guilty as anybody if you kind of want to just let it go by and pretend it didn't happen. But I think this is a good reminder that it's past time to do that. And I appreciate you getting this, you know, to at least start bringing this to everybody's attention.
Cory, on that point, I think the last line that talks about manifesting, I use in action, an act of action that all citizens can take, as you say, on an individual level, as a group level, and from a couple of levels from us. So thank you, Cory.
I do agree with Cory, it's very well written, like many of the points that were made here. And in the last paragraph where it says that we stand together with all people of good faith in our community and acknowledge we have the power to change our attitude and hopefully that we can do that. This is, you know, one step in many ways that our actions are going to speak louder than words, so. Thanks, and will we adopt this?
Further discussion? Rule call please.
Mark?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you council for. You're right, you're coming up here well. At this time, the last will come forward, we're going to sign the resolution here tonight. And your presence and the ability, your presence and appreciates your stance and the work you've done. So, on behalf of Lindesburg community, I sign this resolution to work towards the oppression of hate and that within the Lindesburg community. Well, we have a copy for you to send with you, and again, appreciate very much.
Forgive me for being emotional, but I, on behalf of Bethany College, on behalf of Jones family, thank you for your support. It's obviously been a very difficult path to walk the last couple of weeks as a professional and as a dad. And maybe I'm moved here because we thought Lindesburg would be a great place to raise our family and we still learn that's true today. And that your actions and your words speak very loudly to us as a family. And I know that they also speak very loudly to our students, our faculty, and our staff, and our alumni, and all those people across our country who are people of goodwill and who do support love and kindness and civility. And I hope that this resolution will inspire other communities to do likewise. I think you all are leaders and I'm very grateful for that, thank you for this very much. Thank you, mayor. Oh mayor, if I could add one thing, I'm sorry. Please. Lindesburg Hospital and a group of us got together to think about one response that we might take to recent events, and one of those responses was just to create an identity symbol, a way for all of us to know that we are those people of goodwill and who have good intentions and who want to promote love and kindness and respect. And so Lindesburg Hospital paid to have bracelets made to say, one people, love all. And if you'd like to have one before the end is out, we'd like to share one with you, but we'll pass passing these out.
That'd be great, I'm sure we'd love to. Item B, the ADA parking in the C2 Downtown Business District. Tim, are you rushing for that?
Chief, I'm sorry, chief. Well, both tents are actually involved. There was a recommendation that we look at additional parking in the Downtown Business District. Some people there are worn enough. So, we identified a couple of locations that were handicapped prior to the upgrade of the downtown area. So we would like to bring those back as handicap stalls. And we identified a location on the organ on State Street around the corner to the east from main. We would like to have handicaps extended yellow curb area. And we would put a handicap on at that location. So those were the recommendations from Tim, Don, and I. We look at the locations.
By this, do you mean that you think there are enough on the west side? I mean, if you're in a wheelchair or on crutches or something, these are very nice, but you can't get across the street very well.
Great, I see I'm turning it.
On the west side of the street, on the northwest corner of Main and Lincoln, there's one right there next to the ADA ramp. So they have access to the west side of the street from that location.
That's on?
On Lincoln Street.
The north side of?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Tim, did you say this parallel parking lot is a yellow curb now?
That's correct.
Will you, it doesn't stay yellow, I'm going to handicap it yellow, can you, or can you do that?
The sign identifies the location where the yellow curb.
Here, I'm going to write tickets if they park it on here. Parking on the yellow, okay. So these require posts to be drilled into the concrete in these areas, I assume?
Sign is required? So yes. There are no existing posts there. Couple of the places already have posts, but they should have been put back up when the project is done. Well, we'll find that after we'll come.
New posts? New signs?
Yes, sir.
Additional questions for Tim or Tim?
Just a quick one, you mentioned the handicap stall that is along the corner of Main and Lincoln. Are there other handicaps stalls also anywhere else downtown, or is that it? Anything on the south hundred block? There's two in the south hundred block on, right there by the seniors, is it two or three?
Two.
Two, and then there's one behind and in the south parking lot by the school district office.
Sunstream.
The Sunstream has two.
Post office.
Post office.
Are these? Additional questions? What is your desire?
Your motion.
I need a recommendation to approve the handicap signage as Tim Berger has laid out.
Second. Ten moves and second, we've had the discussion. Rule call please.
Kelly? Yes. Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion carrying, EMT class. Uh, the desire is you spend $8,346. What is your desire?
Move it through.
Second.
Move to seconded, discussion with Tim. Tim, you want to comment on it?
This is our second EMT class of this year, trying to raise the number of people who will cheer for our service. And it's been a very successful class, of course, so far we have several that have signed up. Of course, we've applied for a grant, so we're hoping that the majority of this cost will be picked up from the grant.
Tim, did I miss the discussion about why one of them is less than all the rest? 170 for one percent and the rest are less?
There is a reason, but I have forgotten what that reason was.
We appreciate your honesty. Does, she will be a full-fledged EMT, that's correct. You answered one of my questions, though, I see there's eight in this class. What, is our success rate been very, I mean, is it 100% or plus two?
Uh, it's not 100%, we've had several that have had a retest, so we've been very fortunate in the retesting to pick up those that have passed the first time. So, I know we picked up several on the internet and, you know, brought them onto the core and fixtures and that kind of thing in the last three or four, council making them one or two or three at a time. So I think that's great for the service in that. Are these helping out the daytime things or is it mostly? Most of those people are still on probation, so once we can get them through the probation period, it'd be a big, I think, a big help. And of course, the more people that we can get on the service, the less strain and chances of burnout occur for the rest of the people that are taking soon calls right now.
All right, thank you. Other questions? Tim? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mark?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion carrying, Tim, please express the appreciation of council and the community for those that take the class and do become part of our work. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Next item is CDB billboard, only. What is your, before you start, only, what is, councilor, is your desire on this?
Take a motion to approve $3,360.
Your motion is your second?
Second.
Only, you want to give us your thoughts and recommendations?
Well, I have been looking for billboard possibilities. We know that for many years Lindesburg, as people know about Lindesburg because of our billboards. We hear that frequently from our business centers and we feel as a business community, and again, with feedback from my CDB board, that this is a very important thing that we continue to do. Billboards are very expensive, it's a rule, we've been very fortunate, there are billboards along I-135. We've been able to lease at no cost or at a very small cost from farmers that we have good relationships with. I think I've had those relationships for many years. We have three billboards currently along I-135. The two billboards that we lease along I-70, we lease from George Lay. And we have one that will be up for a new contract in November and one that will be up for a new contract in June. The one that will be up in November is the one that is east of the I-135, I-70 interchange, just barely east. And we found a replacement sign that I'm suggesting that we switch to this new sign that is in a very good location, just west of Teke. By great request, I looked and I didn't know that these existed, a KDOT has announced that allows us to see the traffic flow, average traffic flow per day. We would be gaining somewhere between 2,000 and 4,000 vehicles a day, increase in, um, speed. The only bad thing about this sign is it is more expensive. What we're currently doing, and one of the things that we've been trying to do is find ways to cut this cost, and I'm not finding a way to do that. The sign is larger than the sign we currently have. I believe, and I'm talking to the one from George Lay, that the sign we currently have will up in cost, it will go up from $200 a month to $235 a month. The new signage is $280 a month. It's 10 feet wider, it's a 10 by 40 billboard, the one we currently use is 10 by 30. This billboard is located farther off the interstate, it's next to our front Detroit, but it is in a very good location. So my recommendation is that we go ahead and we take this billboard, George Lay will not make this pay the final month of our contract, so they will put us drop our current contract in the post, with the new billboard contract.
Questions for only?
I have a question. This, uh, because I'm deifying the whole of this. But this proposal you have here for this thing says that it is east of Salina and faces west. Why does it face west?
That's confusing. The sign is when you're driving, you're facing west. So.
Say it again.
When you are driving, you are facing west instead of, it's considered west. Oh, I should say, I should have worded it, it's a westbound sign, does that make sense?
Oh yeah, I see. Okay.
Because the face of it is not west.
Okay. Thank you.
The sign is facing west.
Thank you, only. Other questions?
I can attest it's a good location, very location, very geographic. My only question is, it sounds bad, is there any way we could fit that one, keep the one with it a little bit closer to it?
I currently don't have that in my budget that I guarantee it for you. My transient guest tax to be clear is down substantially. I checked it, it's down about twenty-eight percent from last.
Only, would you be up for a partnership with a dollar horse maker, they sponsor that sign?
I would be.
I did not know that question.
You wanna talk?
Talk later, but.
I, I would love to be able to keep those of them, and I would honestly really like it if we could put in place our Blue Ribbon signage on one of those, on those, closer to Salina.
With a partnership, can I get the photo?
So.
You guys talk about that later.
They already have someone to take the billboard, they're questioning it, so it would be something we would have to tell them, so they'll be, they'll, so they can find a partnership.
It'll be good, so the city, the city will, maybe it will keep that sign? Not, not you, not you directly, but as I say, the.
Not me, but you can keep the sign, you can see as long as I would let them know that we want it, yes.
Yes, that one, I would have an interest in that. What are the?
I thought that was a joke, and I'm glad I did.
New vinyl for that sign will probably be about five hundred dollars, still fifty bucks, six hundred dollars for the whole sign.
Good, good. Other questions? Only or Cory? Roll call please.
Kelly? Yes, Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you all very much. Moving on to item E, it's the Golf Course Clubhouse Park roof. Council, what is your desire on this?
Next question, we approve, uh, three thousand sixty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents to Mid Kansas Construction.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, Kate, do you want to bring us up to date with your council questions?
Sure. Um, so before you, it's just a bid from the clubhouse roof, good news, it's not from a whole roof. Um, and it's the back of it, which is the west side, and if you told us here, then the item form there, you'll see a couple of pictures of that first one, that will show you kind of the general area we're talking about. Um, and it's actually where we house eight of the ten metal cars that we have. Um, and the second picture is, will show you the main problem we have, which is, you'll see there's a hole there and water is leaking through, um, through the roof and through wood and then down onto the cars there. Um, that hole sits on the north side of that back part of the roof. And then there's also, um, a couple of other smaller, minor leaks that are on the south side of that area. Um, and so we had a couple people come out and looked at it, and the recommendation has been to just completely replace that whole part of it. Um, because patching it up, I mean, it would be a perfect fix, but it wouldn't be too good. We just ended up with the same problems overall. Um, and they also told me that what looks like happened when it was put on, the whole roof was redone in two thousand nine, um, it looks like that back portion was put on too low. And so where the seams meet right there, where the, they arched up, um, were not matching each other. And so that's where water is then being leaked in, and then that wood structure.
Questions for Kate?
So this estimate doesn't replace that hole on there, but a portion of where the leaves come from?
They won't touch where it, it arches it up, they won't touch that, but it's gonna be that whole back part.
The whole hip part from the end? And why, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be argumentative here, I just can't see this, I can't understand why, I mean, that those seams have snapped together. Why a third of the roof couldn't be removed and fixed correctly without doing the whole roof?
You mean, it's just that, that stress right there?
Yeah.
Well, it's because we also have leaks on the other side, too. That there's that, you have a huge leak that's on the north side, we also have some small, much smaller leaks that are on the south side. That are, so basically the opposite sides of that whole portion. So we could, you know, we do that, a part of it, but assuming those other leaks we have on that south side, they're still gonna have to be forced, forced, we don't fix that part of it.
The south side would be on the left of this picture?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right.
Right of this picture. Couldn't get my, my.
Probably about where that first pole is on the roof. First inside, new guards in.
So the top portion of the roof, does it not come down far, not overlap the bottom part?
Yeah, I mean, that's what the issue is, they said too, uh.
So how are they going to, for three thousand dollars, make the S part go under the other part without redoing the top part as well, or is that they're going to redo the whole thing?
He, I agree with he. Um, he said, what if we were moving the lower roof metal insurance, replacing a couple of pieces of the sheeting, um, new one related, installing new standing seam metal insurance.
Were you able to secure the other bids, or did you just?
I had two, I didn't get two people to look at it, got one bid in and the other, no, they would never have turned in the bids.
Is this in your budget, Kate?
It is on our budget, it was just covered with all five of my taxes.
Well, I talked to some other people who play golf and are out there, and they thought on one of their workdays, they could make a real dent on this event. Have some of the roofers come and do the final touches of rest, do you think that?
I mean, yeah, that's something we could look into, I'm not so sure about one hundred percent. Trust that over a contractor that's in business, but it's not very easy.
Uh, we'll see how the contractor that was in business did it. Another out of business.
Insurance life, Barry, you have volunteers, again, they're part of the work, the contractor does another part of the work, since this is kind of a public facility, are there any issues with that?
So essentially, volunteers, if covered under our, our insurance policy, if an accident happens, um, whether voluntary or the city.
I guess, I would have some concern over that, because, for example, if the roof does fail again, you can't go back to volunteers and say, your work wasn't, was so standard. And the contractor, I don't think is gonna assume any responsibility for something volunteers did. I, I guess I would, I understand trying to save somebody, but I guess I would mean, of course, if we have, to be a contractor, just have to, to have to, my contractor.
Mid Kansas Construction, are they reputable, have they been around a while?
They are, they're the same people we used to do the wood structure at the pool this summer. So we weren't going forward and having issues with their boards.
Did you get a sense from both contractors that bid it, that, I mean, this would be a basis?
Mm-hmm, yeah. I had one, one somebody, you know, I can go to patch it up, we can free, but it's not gonna solve the problems. We would have to say that you're all over again, so.
Additional questions? Kate? Roll call please.
Okay. Mark?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
David?
No.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Kate. Next on the agenda is an executive session.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go into executive session ten, as we discuss matters regarding purchase of grid estate and to include the city attorney and city administrator and return to session at changes of the schedule.
You hear the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Hold it there, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same time. Thank you. Before we turn at seven twenty. Call, call the vision out. Call the media board. Moving on to item twelve, Department head reports. Hazel, Scotty, we'll go to her today.
Okay. All right. Um, given everything else is very hot for that tonight, and I've kind of struck out on things to update you on, but I did want to tell you, um, we hosted our last tournament at the Golf Course this weekend, and actually, probably had a build-up last week. We had a handful of people sign up, and we didn't actually know if we were gonna be able to have it, and it actually blew up to twenty people by the end of the week, so we were able to have it, which was great. We got the weather that day, and it was just a really pretty cold day. Um, we will have another tournament next weekend, which is the same flood insurance tournament. They come out and play every year out there, they run the course all day, so it's one of our bigger tournaments that we, um, rent out for. And then we actually have a tournament, RWE, for next year, which is kind of exciting. Um, we'll be able, so hopefully the, the, we'll kind of hold up for that. Um, and then I'm also working on kind of getting some more of our golf stats put together as far as what our rounds are looking like this year. Remember, we got it on this year, I've had practically done, been working on it. Um, but I can't say round five, we're actually ahead this month on rounds, so that's good to see.
Will your stats include the comparisons from last year?
Yeah, we've, 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 thank you.
Other questions for Kate?
Quick question. Um, when you have a tournament all day like that, do you rent it as a lump sum, lump fee?
Yeah, maybe, uh, if all day or four feet, and then, I mean, uh, we're actually bringing in our own carts for it, because the vehicles will bring in their own carts, unless you're not kind of the ones we have.
Other questions?
Does the course close that day in the downside?
Yeah, it closes by that day.
That question up on Sunday?
Yes.
That's on Sunday?
It's Sunday.
Saturday. All right, thank you very much. Community development.
Uh, good evening, I attended a workshop today in Annalee on, sponsored by the Department of Flood Resources. And it had to do with the remapping of the flood insurance remap, a process that will take about two to three years, and is beginning today. We just did this back in oh nine. It was a fairly simple update. It incorporated Westview, the Westview Channel into the flood map. It really didn't do any changes to Cow Creek or the flood insurance study that is, is the core area of Linsburg. Uh, but it did do, it did add some area out of Emerald Lake that it included, or suddenly there were ten homes that were in flood. Uh, five of them were able to provide surveys and elevate out, get a woman, and they're out of the flood plain. The five are still in the flood, and it's, it's a significant impact. Because there's the requirement for flood insurance if there's a mortgage on the property. And that's a big deal, that's a significant impact about it. Um, unfortunately, this update is going to affect everything in our community. It will look at Cow Creek very closely. It will look at the tributaries that lead into town, which led to the flooding in 2013. It will also review the flood, flood area that was added to Emerald Lake. Now, that possibly could have resulted in that area being taken out of the flood. I, I really think it will, because that's always a strange addition. Um, but there's some real concern. It's going to take two years. And I think, Greg, when you were involved in oh nine, I think, because it was such a cut and dry thing, it didn't change much of anything. It was suddenly adopted by FEMA, uh, or at least felt that way. I don't know that we felt like, we felt a lot of integrated in the process. Uh, I'm encouraged this time, because here we are, beginning a few-year process. Uh, we're encouraged to form a working group. And I would really appreciate if I could have a couple of council members join a working group of just a few people. And it's not like going to meetings even, even twice a year, this could be done by emails, but just to be able to give on a mailing list and follow the process as we go through the next two years of study. So, it'll be, and, you know, I'll put all of you on the list if you all want to, but a couple would really be nice. Um, I will update you on this from time to time, we will be very involved in the process. Uh, again, the impact will be very significant, because homes that are adding to flood plain, automatically decline value to account for the requirement of flood insurance. So this has potential to, but.
Flood insurance, you told me references about what, how much?
You know, I, it, bill any helper, it can run.
No, I think you could spend five hundred to eight hundred dollars a year, probably.
Thank you.
And that's pretty, they're high, they're, it's more catastrophic than.
Yeah, I, I honestly can't answer that.
Is anybody here tonight who wishes to join Gary on that, at least on email, Jane?
Keep coming on, okay?
Thank you, you know. Thank you, Cory?
Great, thank you.
Administration of Finance.
Um, distributed in front of you are the financials for, for the majority of the funds. In history of two thousand, uh, two through fifteen, year to date through sixteen, when you look at the general fund, that first page is just the aggregate revenues and the aggregate expenses for all the sub-funds. Then when you get to the subsequent pages, it breaks the expenses down by sub-fund from general government, police department, fire department, uh, parks, CBB, swimming pool, and Sunstream Conference Center. And the rest, or the majority of the, the others are just the revenues, or the aggregate revenues, the aggregate expenses. Until you get to the electric fund, which has, uh, the top page of the electric fund is the aggregate revenues, aggregate expenses, net income or loss for the year. But then the subsequent pages show, it says production, that's the, uh, cost of purchase power on a monthly basis. Uh, you'll see that we spend well over two million dollars a year in, uh, purchasing power for the community. Distribution expenses are those expenses that include distribution system here in town. Uh, the general administration covering everything from, uh, utility billing, et cetera, and then it breaks it down from there into the non, what's called non-operating expenses. Then if you just got the CD, if you have a question right now, we'd be happy to answer it, or if you think of one later, feel free to contact Larry.
Gregor, Larry, are there any of these accounts or anything specific that you wish us to look at tonight that would be either in your mind, something we ought to, get to look at closely, or has come to questions of you through members of the community?
Um, you know, one of the, the questions that we obviously still get is regarding the Sunstream Conference Center. One of the pledges on that was that, um, we would not use any property tax to support the operations of the Sunstream Conference Center, and to date, we have not. When I say to date, it opened in September. And today we have not. When I say today, it opened in September of two thousand thirteen. For, from an operational standpoint and through, actually, in that last column, that should be two thousand sixteen, not two thousand fifteen. Year to date this year, a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in revenue, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in expenditures. So it has a annual net loss right now of twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. But that is made up with sales tax dollars and property tax dollars.
I do have a question, Greg.
Yes.
Whenever I look at the Minneapolis golf course, the bottom of the pictures on it don't seem to have as much negatives of being discussed. Is this because work back then transfers to make it balance out?
Well, you'll, the.
The losses on the golf course at the end of the year from the revenues subsiding, but the expenditures still go on.
Well, like the last one, the income and loss was, it lost eleven hundred dollars.
Well, let me, okay. When we talk about that, when you look at the, the Sunstrom, that number is reflected without putting any tax dollars into it. In the, in the revenue line item, because it's a separate budget, while this is, while the conference center is a sub-budget of the general fund, I mean, it's a general fund, fund. The golf course and recreation are separate from them and are budgeted independently. So we have to budget the amount of tax dollars that go into that.
I see. So the revenue includes.
So revenue includes the tax dollars. So when we talk about a loss, we're talking about the transfers and the amount of property tax that is going into it. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. I know this might be asking a lot. Was there any way to sometime have a, this is how much tax dollars contribute to this specific fund? Is that overbearable to do?
We have done that worksheet and passed it out prior. I can't update it again and pass it out.
If you'd update that out, it's strictly, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, it's quite awesome of me every month or anything, but maybe like once a year it'll be that idea. Just to kind of get a picture of how much each thing gets funded on that.
So if the current golf course does include the transfers, Sunstrom does not? Correct.
So the forty-six on the golf course is close then?
Yeah, because this is really an aggregate report. It's showing the revenue in aggregate, not, not all the items from green fees to memberships to cart bills to concessions to beer sales to. In the, in the same way with the Sunstrom, it shows, shows all of those revenues and expenditures in aggregate. Rue, Riddle, Cagery, all of those are an aggregate number in here and not broken down individually in this report.
Okay. Additional questions for Greg or Larry? Here now, item thirteen, others? Do you know anyone in the report? It's all against the numbers, you're right.
Well, there's more numbers. Ambulance sent away. From the ambulance that was involved in the accident on August twenty-first. We received a check for the striker cot, there was a report in it, or information in the Friday report from Chief Bergen that specifically, since it was involved in an accident at greater than eight miles per hour, that would be, would be recertified for use. While we haven't received that cert, that notice of non-recertification, we have received a check by, it's fully up with the insurance company. Because when we look at actual cash value, what they should be covering, I think is deficient. Additionally, on the ambulance, we have received a settlement proposal of total amount for two thousand two ambulance of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars.
From her, from the other?
No, from our insurance company. My business with them, I said one, we're talking two thousand two of forty-three thousand eight hundred miles on the chief.
Yeah, right, right around forty thousand.
And I, my question was, well, since the other driver was issued a citation, should it be from the other insurance company? Because this is going to go against our experience. Not theirs. Well, the explanation given to me was that they were going to go ahead and pay the claim because American Family hasn't accepted liability on this and they suffered a claim. But I also have an issue with the comparables that they gave for that ambulance, say of twenty. He said they looked at five comparables for twenty-two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. I asked to see those comparables. Said, well, we just got on the internet and looked and we developed comparables that way. And they said you can do the same thing. So they would, they would show me the comparables.
Is our company telling you that?
Yes.
American Family?
No, this is EMS Insurance, our insurance carrier. So EMS is currently working on comparables for the ambulance value. It will, it'll probably be coming back to you to discuss whether we want to accept a settlement or not. If we can get values adjusted.
Is this one of those things where you have a working certified ambulance that gets in an accident and now you have nothing, that twenty-two thousand that you can't replace it?
About what, a hundred and seventy? A hundred and seventy thousand or whatever. It's just a non-budget expenditure. There really wasn't a lot until twenty eighteen. EMS building, I love to say that we're making great progress, but we're not.
Did you say you were making any progress?
Well, there's finger pointing going on, but fortunately, it's not us. You know, there's some. The architect points at rural development, rural development points at the architect. Part of the issue that I have, some of the information I've asked for hasn't been provided to me. I plan to write the state architect directly as to why they're applying their modified building code standards to a non-state building as part of what's driving our cost increase. And I've asked for their specific code citations. I haven't received those yet. God, I think they include that in the letter itself. So that's kind of where that process is. We have sixty days from the bid opening to either accept or decline the bid. So the clock's ticking, obviously. Rural Development says they will do a valued engineer, but we have to specify that in the state we want valued engineer in those some award. Well, the thing is, is the contractor wants to know they're going to get an award if we can get negotiating down to a specified price. And he's not, he's not going to move on anything until he's noticed an award. So we can't, I mean, kind of chicken and egg thing right now. Initially, we need to prove to them that, again, that we own that property and they cover it. So I will be visiting with the city attorney about that and get his certification again. Hopefully, still has paperwork because nothing's changed since the last government.
This is all redundant.
Yes.
One of the big cost factors is, is an issue around the elevator.
The elevator, yes.
And they're wanting something that's at a more current IBC code? Is that your understanding?
With, with the state of Kansas, and I'm not sure which code they follow for sure, but if it's the IBC for state buildings, they've adopted also a more stringent standard than the IBC code. Well, they're applying, and that's for state buildings, they're applying that standard to this project. But the rural development is a federal program, not a state program. That's one. Two, we're talking federal dollars, not state dollars for the program. But yet, the state architect reviews the project. And that's who, that's who is applying that build code standard to this project. And that's why I'm trying to, want to write the letter to the state architect as an explanation why and see if we can just follow the code that is currently written and adopt if I IBC or.
Greg, anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Others? Tim, did Auburn get their things worked out as the highway partner?
I haven't heard yet.
Thank you.
I'm giving them one day. I'll call tomorrow.
Tim or Greg, Prosper Dance Property looks great. I know, I appreciate that very much. Knock down all the weeds, expose the items that are. It does look better than weeds. Looks like, well, maybe somebody's did something here. What's the next step in getting those items taken here?
We've already taken on stuff, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. What's the timeframe or goal? Ten days?
To send that.
Have them gone.
First step is we've taken photographs of the property now that we can see it.
Yeah.
Because we'll be sending a letter to the.
It's great. Thank you. Other others from council members? Motion to adjourn?
The second?
The second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your support of the resolution tonight and. Does it feel, we never.